Gotcha.
It's Lori and I on Zoom.
Okay.
Lori wants to say anything.
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
And. Public is going to be your. So. Um, okay, so let's go to. Pressures report and approval of expenditures. Make that motion again.
I make a motion. That. The board accept the finance committee's recommendation. To approve paying the bill of seventy one thousand seven hundred twenty four dollars and ninety four cents.
Do we have any discussions, any questions? Okay, do we have a second?
No, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Um, which includes approval of the minutes. Uh, a building committee report. Um. There is no upper Hudson, there is no admin, um, there is a president's report, so. I make the motion to accept the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Alright, alright.
Like, I can, I don't remember seeing the presence before, but I missed it.
Now, you might have, but. There is one in there. Been a copy of it, but did not make a copy of that. We'll look for it later, okay?
It is right after the, um, building committee report, it says president's report, January twenty twenty three.
Yes. And Upper Hudson's, uh, material did not come later till late last night, um, so I incorporated to, in, in email, I sent to everybody and then. We'll go from there. So. So we are on to our regular agenda. Thank you for being here. You are number one. Is it too volatile to say with a bullet? On our agenda, then I'm like, you. You got to score. Um, does everyone know Fred and Merzon, by the way? President of the, um, friends. Of our, your library? And you remember? Okay.
Um, the reason I, I decided to, um, uh, put myself on your agenda is I wanted to, uh, catch you up on what we've been about, and then I have a very small ask of you. So as you may know, uh, last year was the first time that we actually went out to the public and asked for support, uh, in commemoration of the fiftieth anniversary of the Friends. And at that time, we, um, uh, Paul shared the patron list with us and we combined it with our list of friends. People who pay dues, um, and, uh, sent the letter out to sixteen hundred people. Of which ninety nine responded with money. And.
Probably a pretty good percentage.
Which I thought was a pretty good percentage, I thought we did really well. And the interesting thing is, we sent it in May and over this last, uh, weekend, you know, December thirtieth, December thirty first, and he some, picked up something like four hundred dollars, and so people do year end of, even though you can deduct contributions unless you itemize your tax. So, but there was a flurry of contributions at the end of the year. Um, as you probably know, because I think that Evelyn told you your last meeting, Paul has asked us to take over, uh, sending out the letter that the board has typically done, asking for support of the library that usually goes in November or December. Um, and he did it out of, uh, I, I don't want to mispoke you, but out of two concerns, one, that there had been a large increase uh, in taxes and to ask the public once again to, uh, give money to the library in that same period of time felt awkward, but I think the most important reason was that when, again, Paul, if I don't get this right, tell me, uh, that when he attended Nyla, there, uh, there was discussion of whether a district taxing library could raise money, could ask for contributions. And so apparently there's been a controller's, uh, opinion, not a, not in regulation or in law, that, uh, tax, uh, uh, libraries that get taxed for taxes through the city are not supposed to ask for do fundraising in that way. So we were asked if we would in fact take over that job, the Friends were asked. Um, and what we agreed to is we agreed that we would take over sending this letter, but what Paul is going to do and hasn't done yet is, is to, uh, write up a memorandum of understanding between the library and the Friends, uh, what the conditions of this, uh, this agreement is, um, which I would hope would include, um, uh, the extent of the, uh, decisions of how the money is used, those kinds of things. So that is yet to happen. Um, and in the meantime, we've been, um, because it was a good year and we had asked for money, uh, that we hadn't, above and beyond the sale of books and, uh, regular membership and contributions, we were able to buy, um, display racks for both, uh, Lansingburg and here. Um, uh, help support the hundred and twenty fifth anniversary celebration, repurpose the book drop um, in Lansingburg, which is the, the shiniest thing in Lansingburg, um.
Beautiful one.
It's beautiful, but that was a really, it was supposed to, uh, this is more detail you probably want, but it's a, I think it's an interesting story, uh. Library things cost a lot of money when they're for library book drop, the estimate that Paul got was something like four thousand dollars, which made me just cringe for a box, you know, um, and so we approached the local, um, auto painting place in Lansingburg, uh, and asked them if they would repaint the book drop. As it turns out, he is married to the librarian in Skyville and had done it before, okay? Had done it before, was only too glad to do it for nothing. What cost money was getting a new book book drop from Delmar and getting U-Haul to bring it, I mean, there was costs involved in, in doing that, but they ended up being fifteen hundred dollars rather than something like that, uh, four thousand dollars, and now we have the shiniest book drop in the Capitol district, um. We also have, uh, been able to contribute, uh, as Paul mentioned in the earlier report, to the repurposing of the children's area at Lansingburg. So we're paying for the carpeting that's going in, uh, in Lansingburg and, um, uh, we are going to pay for carpeting in the young people's area here. And this is a request, the carpeting was a request that came almost four or five years ago, um, you may, some of you who are around and may recall, we, um, brought together, uh, uh, a number of families with young children and asked them, how could the library be more responsive to families with young children? And they had three primary requests, and one was paint the children's area, which we did. One was carpeting, which we won't do till soon, uh, it's, it's gonna happen soon. The third is for, and this still is an issue, is to have, um, the story hour on weekends, because so many, uh, uh, families have both parents in the workplace, and so having programming for preschoolers during the week doesn't work for them. That's yet to happen, um, so that's, that brings you up to date on what we've been doing and what we've been doing with our, with the money that we've raised, and so my hope for going forward and doing this letter after we have this, uh, we understand the parameters of what, um, what we're going to do is to focus this letter. And that it not be just give us money. Um, and we have yet to figure it out, but what we've been thinking about is that with all due respect to all the efforts that you guys uh, have to keep this building standing and Lansingburg standing, to focus on services and programs at the library rather than the brick and mortar of the library. And, uh, bring light to, uh, all the ways that people can access the library um, without even walking in. And so giving support and extending the technological services that the library already provides that people don't know about, like we were talking about the hotspot, I could hardly hear it, but anyway, the conversation you had about all the, of the databases and hoopla and various kinds of things that people can access the library without even, um, leaving their homes, and most people don't know about that stuff. They don't know about it, and as we move further and further into a technological society, it only is expanding, it is possible, some libraries have a special library card that is just for technology, you don't have to have a plastic library card, you don't have to come into life. So our, though, our focus has not been determined, that our, our interest really is in programs and services of the library. Uh, not the building. So. I think for this pledge, this question to be successful, we have to expand the list. So I think that sixteen hundred is a really good list, but we live in a town of forty thousand plus, and, um, so my ask is a very little ask. That each of you come up with the names and addresses and zip codes of people that you know who really care about this library. Who, uh, we could send a letter to, you don't have to ask for money, you just have to give us the names and addresses and zip codes of people helping get elected, people who you know are, you know, think well of this library, who voted but may not be a member of the Friends or have never given money before, those of you who have given money before got our letter. But if you didn't get our letter, it's because you, you, you're not on, on Paul's list, or you weren't on our list. So that's the ask, the ask is five people, names and addresses and zip codes, um, and if you would send them to me. We plan to do this letter sometime in the spring, so it'll be April or May. And, um, so.
So the purpose of this letter is to solicit money?
Uh, it'll be asking for money.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure, initially I thought you wanted to ask more people their opinion as to what was needed.
No, we're asking for money, we're saying, you know, uh, this is a wonderful, what, wonderful institution, we're asking you to support us.
Are you saying five people each?
Each five people, if you want to give us more than five people? Yeah, at least five, yeah. And so I'm asking, well, I'm asking our board to give us five to. We each, I know five people that are not on our lists that, you know, and so if you think about it, and there'll be dupes, there'll be duplications, there'll be people that you come up with that are on the list, so we'll just eliminate them, but if you could come up with five. Bless you. That's it. Any questions?
Would you be in this letter asking for membership or just straight up?
Just straight up.
Straight up, yes.
Straight up, asking for support to, uh, uh, make, make sure that the Troy Public Library is as viable in this, these times as it could possibly be.
And your physical mailing addresses, not email addresses?
Be a physical mailing addresses, because these are letters that are going out, and we are probably going to, um, hire some help in actually doing this pledge, but that is still, um, because it is beyond our capability, yeah. I mean, we could, professional help that knows how to do this kind of task.
That's what you're paying for, turning on that.
Yeah, so with, with the money that we, the money that we earned last time, we did have expenses, you know, um, you know, we had mailing expenses and those kinds of things, um, one of the things we've already done is we've gotten, um, uh, post office just gave us, it's not a mailing permit, but it's a special, um, dispensation for, uh, not for profits. Um, I applied for it last week, I was told it was gonna take three months and we got it today, um. So it'll, it means, I don't know what postage is now, it's something like fifty six cents or something like that, it would be, postage would be something like eighteen cents each, and it's a big, big deal.
Well, and postage is going up to, I think, sixty three.
Did we?
Postage is going up to sixty three, January twenty seventh.
So any questions about this? Any concerns?
I'm surprised that the number is that small.
You mean from sixteen hundred to, to a hundred?
Well, that, it was only sixteen hundred that got asked, how many people get asked?
That's, that's the list, that's the list. It was less than sixteen hundred, because we added numbers, we added names to it.
Is that, I thought that there were lots of people that got asked. That they get asked not only by, by, uh, mail, but also over, over email, too.
Yeah, we do with emails. We have been doing an email, um.
But this list has no emails on it. The list that I, that we got from library had no emails on it, we only did, and, uh, Joey had said that, that Upper Hudson was going to also send out an email to patrons. But I never got it, and so I don't know whether it happened or not.
Oh, um, those are, those are sent to Joe, and he's the one that sends it to all the patrons, and I think there's like eleven thousand on that list. Um, on our list, we had to do, uh, cleaning of our list, because we had some donors that have passed or have moved, and so the list is a lot smaller than it was.
I don't know what, I, I don't doubt, I know you asked them to, ask him to do it, and I know he said he would do it, but since I get two emails from the library every time you do it, I got no requests. Aside from the letter. I didn't get it.
Okay.
Do you account? They use, if they use a special one? Or for just this? It might not have made it through your spam filters because of the volume.
Yeah, that happens to me sometimes. I'll email, even from people that I.
Get it? Well, this, this is the test, did you all get it?
Don't get it, one I certainly have over the years.
No, but did you get it like in May? Did you get a request based, uh, it was a letter that said, what the friend, it was the fiftieth anniversary of the Friends, and this is what the Friends had done, and this is what the Friends were gonna do, did you get that?
It sounds familiar to me, but I can't be sure.
You got it, because you're a member of the Friends, you got it because you were a member of the Friends, but if you're not on the, yeah, you would have gotten it. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. Uh, any other questions about this?
Um, would, you will share the list then when we do capital funding raising, if that comes to that eventually at some point?
Of course, yeah.
I think we've got some things to deal with as far as building that memorandum, I mean, none of us on the board have seen that controller's opinion or any documentation from Nyla, and certainly that type of memorandum, I think is something that should be reviewed by council before we execute.
The memorandum between the library and us?
Yeah. But thi- this is a separate piece of, this is a separate.
This is just for a letter?
Yeah.
That's what's safe. I mean. Sure.
Yeah.
As long as that doesn't take forever, that's all.
Um, just, uh, an update, Joe sent that to our Troy patrons, whoever has it on their list, um, on May twenty third, twenty twenty two.
May twenty third, I will check it. Anyway.
Sometimes they have trouble with those giant lists.
Yes, it's a pretty big list.
Yeah, that could have spanned. So, so I don't know whether that happened or not, but I could have figured that out in May, right now I have no idea.
He said he sent it to eleven thousand three hundred and fifty eight, uh, Troy and Lansingburg adults.
So the reason that I doubt it, okay, is, and I'm sorry, I, I shouldn't even go down this path. Is there are only about ten people who weren't on the library's list and weren't on our list that actually contributed money. So if it went out to eleven hun- to that many people, the odds are it might be more than ten, it's just, you know, I. So anyway, any questions about that, it would be nice if it happened, you know, if it could, once we come up with this, Joy, i- if you know, he could do it again, that would be great, and I don't know whether when you all send your, um, yearly requests, whether it goes through those channels, but.
Yes, we use the same channels also, and it, these are just registered patrons, they have not necessarily given any money to the library. So the one.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same list, the, we give it to him and he sends it. And I can't guarantee that it won't go in their spam folder or whatever, but it was sent to them.
Yeah, okay, good. Um. The other possibility for a list that we were exploring are people who actually voted for the budget. Which is public information. Whatever, four hundred people voted. Whatever the number was this time. Any other questions? So we get to, we have to see what the, it looks like, um, what this memorandum of agreement is, we have to get our ducks in order, but I wanted to tell you that it was gonna happen. And, um, that we have agreed to do this, so.
Thank you for reaching out, special forward.
Thank you.
How will we know whether the names we're giving you are on the list already or not?
Well, that's what we'll check, we'll cross check against it.
So I may give you five names that are already there and then.
There may be people already there, already there. But there may be one that's not.
Do you want to update us on what? I know the Friends were considering something now before spring, you want to talk about that with everybody?
No.
Do you have an address you want these sent to?
Excuse me?
Where would you like these addresses sent?
Via email?
Either to the Friends email, which is friends@theTroyLibrary.org, or Freda dot Merzon at Gmail. But you can do it to the Friends, because I don't know anyone who opens that.
And now when I send it to Freda dot Merzon, it eventually gets through.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, whatever. Us has been. Only now, I'll hold down, okay? Yeah. Okay, thank you, thanks for sharing your time.
There's already a problem again, in most likelihood.
Hey, no.
One of sixteen year olds already, these last few nights, it gets dark, it gets slick.
I don't want to hear that.
Having broken bones twenty years ago on black ice.
Good luck, Freda.
Unconscious of it, thank you.
Um. Any other questions about? What Fred talked about or any other comments? Questions? Okay, in that case. Our next part of the agenda. Um, everyone on, on appearing on Zoom, we are about to go into executive session. I'll make a motion in a minute, so I am, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to ask everyone to, um, what's the word, well, basically leave. To a week out, you can link back in, I'm not exactly sure how this next, how long this next piece will take, but, um, folks. Oh, yes, uh, I make the motion to return to our regularly scheduled agenda and leave executive session. Second, all in favor? Uh, we have made what? Do we need a motion, or do we need just to say that we have decided to? We've decided to continue this at another, um, on another, excuse me, occasion in discussing, um, the eval. Um, at a special, most likely at a special meeting. Uh, that will go back to executive session and not doing it during, doing it during a regular board meeting, all right, let me get that out. Work for you? Person?
Certainly.
Okay, all right. So back to the, again, the agenda, trustee education policy.
Were we gonna set that, eight, that special meeting?
What?
Were we gonna set the date for that special meeting?
I think we should send out a little call, because we have two people who aren't here to begin with, okay?
Thank you.
Very well. Um. We reviewed this a bit last month, uh, I did incorporate, hopefully to people's liking, the suggestions, uh, under course of compliance. Timing. Um, I, there is an added, and I sent an email out, so hopefully everyone had a chance to read that and think about this. Um, it, it, through a conversation with Paul about this section, uh, we added the reimbursement shall be for program costs only and not for transportation or other incidental expenses, like lunch, et cetera. Uh, it's available for retention, deletion, amendment, amending, any thoughts? On that? No thoughts? Leave it in?
Okay. We are.
Any? Okay, um, and the changes. Which is, uh, to, 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 for all other situations, in order for trustee to charge a library for attending a program, the trustee must have been pressed to the board entire, uh, in advance of the program or activity in at least one week before the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Is that the procedure or the policy?
This is the procedure, we didn't make any real changes to the policy, and the policy is taken from the law.
I think I'm looking at the wrong one.
Okay, no, this is all procedures.
There it said.
Uh, received. Should be.
This is like during the interview that it's.
I think the rest of that statement stays the same, and the other one was each trustee shall be allowed an allowance of twenty five dollar program costs per unique program for up to two programs a year without board prior preapproval chargeables in the library, and again, program needs to be from an approved provider. That. Is it changing the wording? Modification of wording? Acceptable to?
For me? Okay, no exceptions.
Okay. Sorry. I, I didn't find anything, okay? The judge? No. Okay, um, then I'll make the motion to and no one had any other changes with the policy itself, again, taking from the law, and with these changes to the procedures piece. I make the motion to, um.
I do have a question.
Oh, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
What's the timing of this education, when do we have to have it done?
By December thirty first, twenty twenty three, we have to have two hours. Each person has to have two hours.
Yeah, two hours each year.
Each year, every year, and it starts as, uh, one, one, twenty three. I think it, in the actual policy part, it, it sort of says defined as defined piece. Defined piece, and it might be in the procedure spot. I didn't really copy the rest of the pages.
Yes, do we know what the consequences are?
But we said that consequences were as required by law.
And I think you're asking, are there any?
Right, as outlined by the state of New York.
Check, there is no other. Couple days ago, I did check today. Uh, there has been no amendment, no update to the actual D L B. Suggested for what they suggest.
I think it's mostly appearance, because you know what they're gonna do, they're going to ask for a lot of. Specifics in the annual report this coming up.
Oh, yeah.
Not like they have been. They said just yes or no. Did you do, you know? No, it's gonna be a lot more detailed.
How many hours, right?
That's how we look.
Yes, so so far there has been no other. Um, so anyways, uh. Uh, I make the motion to approve the. Policy and the procedures piece for trustee on trustee education. One second. Now, on the agenda, it's called right to read, but the actual wording is. We don't want the end books. Paul, you're gonna um.
And we don't want to ban books, we don't want bad books.
precipitated all this interest, especially on the part of A L A, which is um. Um, have a whole series on banned books. Um, but there has been a great deal of activity in the country. About. You know, libraries and the books that they carry, and maybe they should be not carried, and maybe they should be banned, and maybe they. People, you know, attacking the whole right to read philosophy. Now, in the state of New York. I think that is relatively rare. Except in school libraries.
Colonies public.
Well, except for colony, but that's a strange place, I mean. But yeah, there has been a few incidents, but it's it's fairly common in um. Other areas, I remember when um. The director before Tim. Came on, he was from North Carolina. He said he faced these all the time. Challenges to the books that, you know, were bridged. So as a response. A L A was looking at for individuals and organizations like libraries to. Endors um. Things like this resolution against banned books, which you had in the dropouts. And so I. Put it in and I suggested, and I put our names in here. Basically. This is no different than the selection policy we already got. But it's just a reiteration of the position of libraries and. The right to read.
And if you go back to, I think the president's report in October. Or the upper Hudson report, one of the two, I put a piece in it because upper Hudson was considering. Um, joining in on this petition, and in the next, our next upper Hudson meeting, we did actually vote to. Sign on. Paul has personally signed on. We, I think. Again, you can make personal um sign-ons too, but this is the resolution to. Yes.
Uh, there's a paragraph that's repeated. So uh, the paragraph that. Is the second whereas before therefore. Is the same as one that is uh three paragraphs before. And I think the one that the the one on the bottom is the one that shouldn't be there, because there's no and after it. No, except for the end. Are you right here?
Well, we could certainly take that out. I don't know why that's in there like that. Because I took basically this from the A L A page. Also, we'll take out the template resolution against books. It'll be the resolution.
Right, correct. And by the way, right to read is how school libraries phrase their. Okay, so I will make the motion that the Board of Trustees um. Approves a resolution to. And sign on to the A L A United Against Book Bans. Uh, do I have a second? Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
We do incidentally have procedures in place in case there are people who question the. Thirty, thirty years. I've had like one. And we went through the procedure and they were fine.
Yeah, that you did, what's the procedure?
They fill out a form and what what they object to and, you know, have you read the book? Things like that. And then if the form is complete, then we submit it to our selection committee. To reconsider. And if they don't like that, then we submit it to you folks. Which we never have gone that far.
Is there a list of banned books available anywhere readily, readily available anywhere?
Depends, uh, I'm sorry. My experience is that there are several lists out there, depends on you're trying to confirm who's being banned by. And different books, you have multiple lists.
Um, Director's Report?
Okay, I think we sort of covered the Lansenberg project. It's funny, I never thought of that when we originally set up that room, because I. I don't remember how long, about fifteen years ago, we took the wall out and combined it to make, you know, the larger library. Um, and what we're trying to do is um. Better define the children's area of, and so we're gonna be putting children's material and maybe some. Furniture um that is more designed for young people. In the area with the carpeting in the Lansingburg grants, and then we're gonna move the adult materials uh to the other side of the. Building. Um, so that's what's gonna take a bit of moving. Uh, the friends have um. Agreed to cover the cost of installing the carpet tiles and then. Um, we'll be able to use the money from Neil Breslin to through the moving. Specifically, he had recommended, and this is not. You know, strings attached, but he had recommended using the money for young people and young people services. I think it fits pretty well.
Does that? Project use up all the Breslin money?
No, no, Breslin money was sixteen-five.
That's what it was, so.
Yeah, it's a bunch of money left. Although, we still haven't got the check. Upper Hudson does have the money, they're just having got around to putting all the checks.
Well, everything, they're they're heading back to.
Yeah, they're they're behind because of staffing issues like everybody else.
But they're back.
But they're, um, the H track project, um, as you know, we've been approved for ARPA funds. And for D R I funds.
Yeah.
I did receive a letter from the State Department recently um. Confirming our uh D R I grant. And I'm still kind of waiting on the city to send me the money, but anyway, that's the ARPA money. The D R I money is reimbursable. But we are able to submit. Costs as they are incurred, and then. They pay based on that. And this is the same kind of setup I worked with as the ship over years ago. It does take a little time. Maybe you're looking at four, five weeks, six weeks before you actually, I mean, you submit the thing before you actually see. Reversed.
And can you submit monthly or how frequently can you submit?
Probably, in my estimation, as frequently as you can. And I think under the circumstances, it looks as if maybe we should use that first. So that we get that then low. Now. My question was, you know, that was part of my question to the State Department, but then. The other part is. How long before I see the contract? That could be a couple of months.
Is is there a particular department that we're working with?
State Department, as far as I know.
Well, at least that's better than the alternative. Yeah, which was still, I was still a naggy worry, because we never really addressed it, we just.
Well, I think one of the things, I mean, we probably am working with this uh. Want to warn contractors that sometimes it takes longer to process this stuff. I don't know how. Diplomatically.
I think I said you caught the A I A document. Yeah, there's some language in there that is, I'm sorry, this is the owner. This is my ar- owner contractor agreement or the owner architect.
Actually, both phases, I mean, you know, because. We're looking at. Well, that's why I say, ideally, we can get the D R I to start covering expenses right away.
Yes, yes.
And the first expenses we incur is gonna be the design things, you know.
Or legal fees.
Yeah. Sort of lumped that together, consultants. I have completed the R F P. Thanks to your advice and incorporated incorporated almost everything. Into it. Except I gotta figure out the insurance question, but. I don't think that's as critical at this stage, because it's the design stage as it is on the construction stage, but.
If if the state where they they make a test is too small.
Yeah.
And if someone comes and says, hey, this is not A D A compliant back there, we're suing you.
Yeah.
We wanna say. Gee, we hired a professional architect. How come you didn't design this to be A D A compliant? That's what the professional liability piece is for.
Yeah.
I think there is. But that I recommend that it be explored, just to make sure we cover that base there and don't open ourselves up.
Well, that's, I'll check with um our carrier and see what they're looking at, um, see what they recommend. Pretty much using the second phone that you got. And then fill in them. Although, other than that, the R F P is finished, um. Technically, I had scheduled it to go out February first. Which means we could incur expenses before we have a contract. Although the state is okay with that. I mean, they they say we can incur expenses right after they sent me a letter. Basically. Speaking from, but I don't know, whether we wanna move that ahead a little bit based on. Because I also haven't had a contract from the city. And I've asked. Chris about that, but I haven't gotten an answer. So anyway, I don't know if we wanna move that. All of the states forward a little bit, or.
Few thoughts, if you're open, I'd be interested to take a look at the R P one more time, just to revise that one more time. Um, that's helpful. We often issue letters of intent to contractors and say. Contracts are being drawn up and are will be circulated for signature, and you may start doing some work at this time. If you wish, and. We often have contractors who then proceed with some of the paperwork end of things. They don't start any construction work, they don't start purchasing anything. But they start to get their paperwork in order, hit their contracts with their consultants. But they can't bill for anything until the contract is in place, so that's really just allowing them to start the paperwork end of things. But not expend money and and real effort, so. I think it's worth. Entering into a contractual relationship with um. Design professionals, you know, reviewing, getting proposals, reviewing and assessing of proposals. And perhaps even creating a contractual relationship with the understanding that. You can't proceed with work until we have a contract from this other entity, and that would need to be filled out. As part of that contract as well, that they don't start spending time and money either, and then they're billing and expecting to get paid for it. Like companies wanna be paying for things until we have the actual contract in hand, it'd be mine.
Okay, um. Plus, as I look this over, this is. Not gonna be for everybody. This is very specific.
So currently, we have, we don't have any of the checks, including the carpet check, right?
Yeah, we had that.
We have this twenty-five thousand. Okay. So we received that.
Yeah, I mean, that's something. Not gonna go too far. You would say retirement, um, I don't know if I mentioned this, but we have contacted them um about uh getting this off the ground. And we talked about February and they're talking about July. So, so it's the great state of New York.
It brings up a couple of questions. Brings up a couple of questions. What do we have to start paying the state of New York when? And do we need?
Not until we're in.
Do we need to continue in T I A A craft? Until we're in. How does, and how does that work with our budget?
I think we need to, yeah, I think we need to leave things as they are until we get the okay. Until we're in.
And we're a budget to be able to do that.
That's what they said. It's up to them at this point, we serve our people. It's up to them at this point. We've covered our people.
So is, is the. More expensive than your. My concern also, my other concern is that the state is going to say. You're in, but we, we're getting it right from the start of the year now that you're, we've done the paperwork.
Yeah.
As opposed to.
Well, anyway, they're feeling normal, it would come out in March. It doesn't come out the first year. So I. That's a good question. We can ask them whether this is pro rated since. Did we assume that we'd be able to sign in by February and then we'd pay in the regular time in March? So. Yeah, we. Pursue that.
I don't want to leave the employees hanging, but at the same token, we got to make sure we're not paying for two at once when they only budgeted for one.
Well, yeah, right. No, that's, that's true.
Yeah.
No, we don't want to do this.
And, and all the time that. They're taking this. Service credit time and everything else that the employees are losing.
Um, okay.
Uh, maybe you. Our new state senator can help us.
Well, we don't need that yet. I did meet with our new state senator, however, Jake Ashley. Was very, very supportive of libraries, which is good to hear.
Well, and he had been our. Subtle man. Romance.
He was, yes. He remembered us coming around and. Oh, within my evaluation that, you know, good relations to it. I want to just pass that up. Um.
She invited us to that meeting.
But yeah, I don't think we need help yet. I think, uh, but I got to figure out how that payment thing works. It occurred to me that. After I heard July, after I got over the shock. That was going to happen.
We never opened it after the.
Oh, they should build the money.
Oh, no, no, I'm not ready for it. Okay.
Very good. Oh.
The doors are closed.
We, we had, uh, if you know, we had.
Let's do it.
Oh, yeah. We had, um. City was able to um, give the um, plumbing system a name and all of our people asking.
And I said, reachable. Excellent.
Where all happened. Um. We need to. Technically. Finished the construction project that involved the uh, ceiling in the reading room and the floor in the kitchen downstairs. That's the good news. There was. A day or so ago. Couple of days ago, there seemed to be a bubble. In the morning downstairs. So we said, let's look into this. It must be. Something we can do. And so I put my foot on the bubble. And the hot water came on.
What?
Steam pipes from underneath.
Oh.
I go, or yeah. Rico will be here tomorrow morning. Anyway.
Does that mean they're leaking?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
There's a leak in the place. Which is their nightmare for the most part. That's what ours too.
Yeah.
Um, and.
Well, yes, potentially, you're right. Potential insurance claim.
Well, he's pursuing that angle. Um. The thing about the project too is that it did come out under budget, which you're never supposed to do, public library construction fund. So I did a, a then loop. Um. Through the project and that's been approved. Um, there's a electric service panel upstairs. That we've used for a hundred years now, the thermal lights on and off and the. Two of the switches are now broken off. The panel is literally. As. Comes with the building. I mean, it's a hundred years old. Then we're going to replace that down. Put in a couple of more outlets and then we'll cover the rest of them. Money for the grant, but.
Has someone told you they have a panel available?
He said you can get one. He said it's, it's like a panel that's got a dual purpose. You can use it as switches. You know, as well as sort of like, so, right? That's. What we actually need anyway. This is no switches in there, no way. Plus it'd be consolidating as two more services. That need to be consolidated with that panel.
Well, kudos to you for uh. Arranging to get that done for that amount of money in the timeline that's available. I'm very impressed. So thank you very much. The lack of work isn't cheap after what I.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Because what he does. I think, you know, we'll put that in your evaluation. I think you did really good at that one. It's not the first time you've had to do that and you've come up with some.
Couple of times in the, in the first. I'm saying we don't need them, but I'm saying. It's there like there. As far as I'm concerned. Um.
General contractors who were hired to do.
Rico can struggle.
To do what?
For the concrete.
Those there.
Yeah, they deserve it. They're existing, fight those down there and crack something or work something.
Okay, anything else for?
Then I'm running into trouble.
Directors, are you good?
What's that?
You good, Britta?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, open your business. I did send uh, an email about, uh, I'm so excited, advocacy day in person. Uh, February twenty eighth. Please, if you can, bring your babies, bring. No, no, but I'm just saying, bring your babies, bring your children, bring your, you know, like your, your entourage.
It's in person.
Yeah, in person, in person.
None of this.
No. In person. I, I will say the reason I'm bringing you up at post, um, having it in the president's report to is. Usually at this point, we figured out how much money is actually in the, in the governor's budget for the construction fund. And how much for the systems money and that's how much we have to push against. When Iowa is the one that usually goes and sort of ferrets out that information and they're having even more stepping in here than. Anyone else, they do not have the uh, director of governmental advocacy. Um, it's vacant, the vacant spot right now. So they're working on it. They're working, the person is still working with the transition team. But it might take a little longer to find out what those actual numbers are. So everybody's waiting. So hopefully it'll come soon and I'll let everybody know when I hear what. You know, where, where the starting point is again this year. Um, I think that's it. Okay, our community feedback.
Nobody was talking about the library or our holidays. They bought books for this, but nobody talked about the library or holiday.
Now that we're sort of back doing programming, I did hear, again, again, it, it just shows that the library is so many things to so many different people. And people want it to be different things. So I heard from one person who said, why can't we have like story hour in the evenings, you know, for your working mom? And someone else was telling me, isn't it wonderful that you're doing these afternoon programs? He's, I don't drive at night anymore. So it's just running that gamut of what we have available. What we're offering the public what the public wants. And I, but I share that. And you have something?
Yes, I would like to say. In relation to community feedback that. Our story hours here are doing very well.
Yes.
Um. Lots of little ones. The only thing is. Cause I was walking down the street. Parents with little tiny kids who. Park. All over the place in the freezing cold. I'm just want to ask that along. But they come out. And uh, it's been really a bright spot in uh, programming.
So it's like the parking is not deterring them from coming for story time here.
What's that?
Sounds like the parking is not deterring them from coming to stories.
No, no, it isn't. Uh, I just sometimes feel.
And still they.
Um, yeah.
But there could be more.
Hey?
Yeah.
And I don't know if some of them park, even parking. Block or two.
When, when did you know, what, when is the story time?
What's that?
When do they, when do you hold the story time?
Ten thirty in the morning.
Um.
Um, Thursdays.
Oh, on Thursday, okay. So it's not really competing with any other activities going on down.
No. Yeah, I mean, you could move, I mean, we could move the story time to evening as in that one person would show up.
No, I, I didn't know if it was like on Saturday with the competing with the.
Weekend makes a little more sense. Um, but evenings don't make as much sense because I think people are busy.
Well, kids sleep.
What's that?
That little kid's.
Well, that's another thing. But the consider.
If I could just say something. Um. Uh, we've tried, we did, we have tried Saturday story hours in the past. And um, they're not. People don't tend to come or they may come initially, but it's just, it doesn't seem to be sustained. The other issue is the staffing shortage. Um, makes it really challenging to, to do that on the weekends anyways. So.
Thank you.
Sure.
And. By that too, some of those craft classes here are really going gangbusters also. Getting class, some of the other craft. People, lots of people. Um. Okay, that's, I think. We've done that. Public comment.
That was the public comment.
Well, maybe there's more public comment. We're not rushing away. Public comments? Anymore besides Carol? See Lori? Going once? Please.
I'm good.
I love it. Okay. All right, so public comment. So um, I guess we're up to date and time of next meeting, which is February fourteenth.
Stop and think, those of you with significant others.
So I'm not today?
Yes.
No, not me. Uh, my first thought was. Anyways, um. Five o'clock to finance, five thirty for regular meeting. I guess last but not least, going once, going twice, anything else? Then I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Yes. Excellent. All in favor? Anita.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody.